I'd like to call to order the Bristol Tennessee City Council meeting of October 1st, 2024 to order. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Powers, here. Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Welcome and thanks for everyone for attending. There'll be a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with the night's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter the city council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council. Now, I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Hutton to lead us in our invocation and Councilwoman Powers to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, it's been a rough week or so for a lot of people in our region, a lot of people in our community. We're grateful for the men and women working with BTES and Public Works and all the folks in our city who have risen to the occasion. We're grateful even for folks from the outside coming in to help us, but even more so, Lord, we lift up our neighbors in Damascus and Irwin and Elizabethan and parts of North Carolina and all over this region, Lord. Our hearts are broken for them. We, we realize in this community that we've suffered some inconveniences to the largest extent, but others have been devastated. So we pray for those who are in the midst of digging out and navigating all that, Lord, that have lost loved ones or still not sure where they are and communication. And, Lord, that's hard. And so we lift them to you and we ask that you would use your people to bring great help and hope and light in the midst of darkness. We thank you, Lord, that you've laid it on the hearts of so many people in our community to give and to respond. We help, ask whether you help us to do more. Lord, as we do this business tonight, help us to do so in a way that's pleasing to you, that also advances and helps this community to flourish. Lord, we're grateful and thankful to live in a free nation and all that's gone before us to make that possible. We lift up this time to you and ask for your help. We do so in the awesome and powerful and marvelous name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions this evening?
There are no additions, Mayor. However, our elections administrator had a previous commitment that will make him a little bit late for our meeting, so we'll have to just adjust.
Okay.
With that.
No worries. All right, first, we have four proclamations and two recognitions this evening. The first proclamation is celebrate Babies Week. Councilwoman Powers will read the proclamation and Ms. Charlie Dugger, Inclusion Coordinator with the Association of Infant Mental Health in Tennessee, will accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. We must work to ensure all children are given the best start possible by supporting early relational health. Tennessee has invested extensively in spreading awareness of adverse childhood experiences faces and encourage the promotion of positive childhood experiences, PCEs, through the building of Strong Brains Initiative. Through intentional community outreach, networking, education, intervention, and policy awareness, babies, their families, and those that support them throughout Tennessee are to be celebrated. The mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaims the week of October 21st to the 25th, 2024, as Celebrate Babies Week in the city of Bristol, Tennessee.
You'll have to part of my voice. I'm just now getting it back. But at the Association of Infant Mental Health in Tennessee, we support the workforce in Bristol and across Tennessee who support our little ones, childcare providers, pediatricians, preschool teachers, child welfare, and so many more. Each year during October, communities from across Tennessee, the US and the world come together to celebrate Babies Week. This week focuses on early relationships being the foundation of a young child's development and the importance of having nurturing, consistent caregivers. For the first time, our government has also declared this week Celebrate Babies Week across the state of Tennessee, and we are proud and grateful that Bristol has joined us in celebrating Tennessee's infants, their families, and their caregivers. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next, we have National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Councilwoman Fire Robin will read the proclamation and Brittany Fleaner, the Coordinator of Community Response Specialist at the Branch House, will accept.
Okay. Domestic violence transcends racial, ethnic, religious, and socioeconomic borders, and its perpetrators harm their victims, endanger children, traumatize families, and threaten our communities. Victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services so they can escape the cycle of abuse. Local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence and to eliminating it through prevention and education. The mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaims the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bristol. We could talk about Branch House. It's awesome. It's a partnership with our law enforcement and our courts and all the different agencies that work to prevent domestic violence. They do a fantastic job. They're located in Sullivan County, Blountville, and also across the whole state of Tennessee. It's a fantastic program that works really hard. So we are sorry Brittany's not here this evening, but it's an awesome program that y'all should check it out. So thank you very much.
All right, next, we have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and Councilman Luttrell will read the proclamation and Assistant Fire Chief David McGlamery will accept.
The city is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Bristol. Home fires killed 2,700 people in the US in 2022, and fire departments responded to 360,000 home fires. Roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. Bristol's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education. The mayor of Bristol, Tennessee proclaims October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, and urges all the people of Bristol to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Bristol's first and emergency services.
Got about a 20-minute speech on a few things I'd like to talk about. First, I'd just thank you all for allowing us to do what we do. We're blessed to be able to do that on a daily basis, and we appreciate that. We get in situations from time to time that aren't comfortable, but we love what we do, and that's what makes this work. Now I want to plug open house. Saturday, our new fire station two, we're having an open house. It's for the community. I'd like to see, we're going to have a lot of kids' activities. We're going to do a car, do a car seat check. We're going to have stations set up, and we're going to run all the children through a small fire rookie school. So they're going to get to experience what the firemen do along with the firemen on a scale they can handle. It's going to be pretty fun. So everybody come out Saturday, starts around 11 o'clock, going to run until 3:00 or 4:00, or if we still have people, we'll, as normal, we'll stay as long as we need to. Thank you, guys, for this.
Thank you. So I got a little out of order. So next, we have a proclamation for Honor Flight, and Vice Mayor Hutton will read that, and Sarah Rab, the Treasurer of Honor Flight of the Appalachian Highlands, along with veterans Lonnie Barrett, Richard Ellis, and Tom Fluke, will accept the proclamation.
The United States has called upon brave individuals to defend our freedoms around the world, and the men and women of the armed forces have stood resolute, putting their lives at risk when needed the most. Honor Flight of Appalachian Highlands was formed in September of 2021. Honor Flight takes veterans from any service area on an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC to see the memorial erected in their honor from a grateful, thankful nation. October 11th through 13th, 2024, HFah is scheduled to complete Mission 10 to Washington DC, building healing, camaraderie, closure, and respect for those who have served. The mayor and council recognize the completion of Mission 10 of the Honor Flight of Appalachia Highlands, providing a day of honor for over 200 local veterans. We honor and celebrate our veterans across the state and the nation for their service, sacrifice, and selfishness.
I want to thank the city of Bristol for recognizing Honor Flight of Appalachian Highlands and our veterans. I could stand up here all night and tell you how much this organization means to me, but it's really about our veterans and honoring their bravery and sacrifice. Is there any veterans in the room? If you'll just raise your hand. Thank you for your service. I brought two special people with me that want to say a quick word, and again, thank you very much.
Sarah reminded me of a course I took years ago, Dale Carnegie, in perpetuity. I didn't know I was supposed to say anything tonight. I'm a retired Air Force, and this trip that we took really meant a lot to me. My son was born when I was in military, and when I retired in 84, he was 23, 23, 24. So it gave him a different perspective. He knew about the military, but going to these monuments, the memorials, it really impressed him. And it was very wonderful to see, see him glean his knowledge. I, I enjoyed it with the fellow people. It was, it was a good time, and we were welcomed and treated very kindly. Thank you.
I'm kind of like Sarah. I could, I could stay up here and talk for a while. But Honor Flight was good to me. I've gone twice. I went once as a veteran, and I went the second time as a companion. So that, I got to see, what, I could see the same thing I saw the first time, but I got to spend more time there. So it's a, it's a good group. They, they love what they do, and they're honored to do what they do for us, and it makes us feel more appreciative of what we've done for the country. So I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say before we go on, Assistant Chief, I know that we have some other members of our department that are with us, and I just wanted to say thank you for coming. You'd stand and if, recognize those folks that are here this evening. I know you guys have had a long few last three days, so thank you for coming this evening. Next, we have Bristol First Recognition for the Police and Fire. Mr. John Luttrell will present.
Thank you, Mayor Turner, members of council, and Ms. Bouchois. The Bristol First Award Program was first established in October of 2014, so 10 years now that we've had this, this program, to recognize city employees for service to the public, leadership, service to other city employees, along with their efficiency, creativity, and inventiveness. Nominations are accepted from fellow employees, elected officials, and community members throughout the year, and tonight, we are pleased to recognize staff members from two city departments whose actions certainly demonstrated a deep commitment to the community they serve. And I think it's only appropriate that we are recognizing folks who do keep us safe all year round, but I think we are especially reminded of that, seeing what they and their, their compatriots throughout the region have done over the past several days. We certainly do not and should never take for granted the sacrifices that they make for what they do. The, there's two separate instances that these groups of employees are being nominated for. The first one I will, I will mention, both of these actually occurred back in August, but on August 15th, a community member was leaving the CVS location on West State Street when he heard a kitten crying and stopped to investigate. After searching the area, he discovered the kitten was trapped in a storm drain, so he called the city's non-emergency number to ask for help. Officer David Graybill of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department responded, and after attempting to, to rescue the kitten from the, from the storm drain, called for assistance from the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department. Lieutenant Matt Chase and firefighter Scott Key and Austin Mason responded from Station 3 and joined in that rescue effort. Working together, they were all able to free the small kitten, and the, the Good Samaritan who first heard the kitten crying and who made the initial call has since adopted the kitten, and due to the location of his discovery, was named Stormy. Sue Williams of Holly Helps Bay and Neuter Fund actually submitted this nomination to recognize our, our city employees, just to draw some attention to the, the kindness that they showed in what, you know, it's one of those stories you hear about, you know, rescuing kittens from trees. Turns out, they can be rescued from underground as well. So at this time, for those who, who are able to be in attendance tonight, Officer David Graybill, Lieutenant Matt Chase, firefighters Scott Key and Austin Mason, if those who are here could please step forward, and if the mayor would join me up here.
We appreciate the recognition. I just want to take the time to say that, you know, regardless of situation, we all take our job pretty seriously, and we're just able to provide a good outcome for the, the incident that we responded to. But as far as the nominations go with things, I just hope that somebody for this next go around, any city employee that had anything to do with any type of storm response, they should all be nominated for this. Everything that's going on in our city and neighboring cities is pretty unheard of and kind of a disaster that no one has ever seen in our area. So just the responders and responses from anybody within our city to our local city and to the neighboring cities is a pretty, pretty heroic. So I hope that anybody that's been involved in that response gets nominated for this for the next round. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have one additional recognition tonight. This, this nomination actually was received internally from Battalion Chief Dwayne Honaker as a result of an incident that also occurred in August. Central Dispatch received a report that an elderly woman had fallen at her home in the, the Hattledale Farms community off of Highway 394 and needed assistance. An ambulance was dispatched from Station 4 in the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department. After assessing the patient, determined that she didn't necessarily require further treatment, but did discover that a, a car was running in the garage of, of the home, and the, the garage door was actually closed with that, with that vehicle running in the garage. The resident explained that her electricity had been, had been disconnected and that she'd started her car to cool off and be able to charge her phone. Without electricity, she was unable to raise the garage door. So a Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department engine was dispatched to the scene to clear the home of carbon monoxide and ensure that it was safe for the resident to remain there. But this is, this is kind of where the actions begin to really go above and beyond. So during their conversations with the resident, firefighters discovered that she did not necessarily have the means to have her power reconnected at that time. So rather than leave her in that situation, the firefighters each contributed money from their own pockets to cover the reconnection fee. While waiting for BTS to arrive, they repaired two toilets, did some cleaning in the home, helped do some laundry, and also purchased some groceries for this individual, again, just by pooling money from their own pockets. The resident assured them that this assistance would absolutely help her get her back on her feet so she could continue to live independently as she had done before. Chief Honaker said that the crew took these extraordinary steps because they felt a, a quote, grandmotherly connection to this resident and wanted her to know that they were concerned about her, her well-being. So with that, I would like to call forward those who are able to be here tonight, Lieutenant Adam Walden, firefighter Chuck Wright, firefighter, paramedic Isaac Mornings, and firefighter Lakeland Ziegler. Lakeland Ziegler.
Thank you all for this. We greatly appreciate it. To say I am proud of those three is an understatement. Once we finished clearing the house, it became, and after making a few phone calls, it became evident that as the department, there was no more we could do. And I'll let them know that, that, you know, as the fire department, we've done all that we can do. After that, it's up to them. And it was pretty well unanimous silent vote that now the, the personal aspect comes into play. And there, there wasn't a second thought. Chuck was on his phone with BTS, trying to get the power cut back on. We were inside doing the rest for her, trying to get her back on her feet. So to say I'm proud of you all is an understatement. So, thank you.
I really hope y'all brought your phone chargers. So we definitely didn't do any of this to get an award. We specifically stated that we didn't want that to happen. And I've seen other people in the department do stuff similar to this for years and not be recognized for it. I had a chief contact me that day and I'll probably get fired tomorrow if I told you who it was, but he said, tell me what the bill was and I'll stop on my way home. I've seen him do stuff like that and was glad to be able, for us to be able to do it. And our lieutenant fed us a good meal that night for it. So we appreciate the recognition. I didn't think I'd get it for this. Several years ago, there was a child lost in the woods at Walmart. We found him, but there was four cops, a canine, and a fireman that got lost in the woods. I went in and found him. The only one worth bringing out was the canine. But I brought them all and I didn't get nothing for that. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you all. All right, next, we have a presentation by the Sullivan County State Certified Administrator of Elections, Mr. Jason Buwer, to present on the November 2024 general election. Mr. Buwer?
Mr. Mayor, Member of Council, it is an honor and privilege to address you tonight as the Administrator of Elections and brief you on the election that's coming up on November 5th. Before I do so, I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to thank the city, the staff, first responders, and the incredible work that they've done over the last several days. BTS, the man-hours that are going in there with the linemen and the sacrifice they're making from their families and the liability and everything that they're putting themselves through is very incredible. And the aid that we're rendering to our neighbors is, is noteworthy. So I think that event that occurred on Friday and continues to this day will also impact our elections to some degree when it comes to by mail voting. But I'm also proud of the fact that in the state of Tennessee, we have the distinct privilege for the last two years to be recognized as the number one state for election integrity. And in my opinion, with the experience that I have, there are three core principles as to why that is the case. One, our laws in the state of Tennessee are structured as such to where we make it easy to vote and hard to cheat. There's a lot of things that occur in other states that don't occur in Tennessee because of those laws. You can't compare us to another state because of those laws. And a lot of people make the mistake of doing that, of assuming that what they think in most cases actually happened being different, but what they think happened in another state has also happened in here. And that's one of the greatest challenges we have is the misinformation that exists out there in the public, primary through, primarily through social media. I always tell the joke that the Egyptians built the pyramids, discovered social media, and then disappeared. It's, it's one of those things where it's tragic to, to me to see firsthand the misinformation, the disinformation that exists in social media, and it affects elections in a critical way, and I know it affects the city as well as just about anybody that walks the face of the planet. And so we can take pride in the fact that we have laws in the state of Tennessee that make it easy to vote and hard to cheat. The second thing that I would say is part of that core principle is our policies and procedures that we implement on a voluntary basis in Sullivan County. We do things that go the extra mile. We lean in in an effort to make it even harder than our laws provide for someone to, to run afoul of the law or cheat or steal an election. And we work hard at the Election Commission, but through all that hard work, at the end of the day, myself and my staff, we're just the stage managers. We provide the equipment, we provide the resources, we provide the knowledge of the law, we provide the customer service to the voters, we keep our election rolls pure so that only those that are legally entitled to vote are, are registered to vote. We make sure the curtain goes up, it comes down, the stage lighting works, all the props work, if you will. We're the stage managers. Because at the end of the day, I don't cast, I mean, I cast my own vote, but I don't count a single vote. I don't assist the voters in the way that the 240 election officials who volunteer for a 14-hour day, in many cases, and in November 5th, will be much longer than 14 hours. They are paid, but a very modest amount of money for their service. And I would venture to say that all of them don't do it for the money. They do it to give back to their community. I've said time and time again, if we had people in all walks of our community that were as dedicated and, and selfless as an election official, we would live in a much more enticing and pleasant and professional environment as a community. These people set aside their personal differences, they set aside their political differences. You know, that's not the way that it works in some places throughout this country. You've got election officials doing battle inside a polling place, but not here in Sullivan County. Average age of an election official is around 70 years of age. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of the younger generation stepping up and volunteering for service. We, we work on that, we try to recruit that. But that's the third component, the third core principle that I consider to be critical to our ability to be ranked number one for integrity, and that is those 240 election officials, I just finished training about 25 of them this evening in Blountville. And they come for about two hours of training, they serve about a 14, 15-hour day. They are who you count on to conduct your elections. They're your neighbors, they're the people you pass in the, in the store, they're the people you sit next to in church. They are what make the election possible, not me. They do. They take an oath to uphold the law and the Constitution of the United States and the state of Tennessee, and they're dedicated tremendously to doing their job. And so it's because of those three core principles. Now, obviously, we know Bristol will be on the ballot for the first time in a regularly scheduled election in an even year. And I want to convey to you guys that you can have the trust in the results of those elections, you can have the trust in those three core principles, you can have the trust in those 240 individuals that are your friends and neighbors. We didn't truck them in here from across the border somewhere. They are your neighbors, they are people who live in Sullivan County. And they're Republicans and they're Democrats and they're independent voters who are committed to their service to their community and their neighbor. So I thank you for the opportunity to come forward and, and talk to you tonight about that. I will say, for all of you that are on the ballot this year, you'll be voting and your name will be on the ballot under a new system, which is a paper ballot voting system. In Sullivan County, we made the decision two years ago to go to a hand-marked paper ballot solution. Some people thought that's a step back in time, but what it does is it provides an audit trail. It's the voter's marked ballot. It's not a machine-marked ballot or a digitally-recorded ballot, it's the voter's marked ballot. And every voter marks their ballot that is optically scanned and retained. In this election, it'll be at least 22 months before those ballots are released, they're kept under a secure environment, sealed, and that provides us that audit trail to ensure that the election has integrity if, if there is any, ever any doubt. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you. But again, it's an honor and a privilege to serve you as the Administrator of Elections for all of Sullivan County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our Board of Education report. Dr. Teter?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to also say thank you. It struck me earlier as you all were going through your, your recognitions that we really live amongst everyday heroes. That's who you recognize this evening. Even those who are not recognized this evening are everyday heroes. I think, I consider it a great honor and a privilege to live in this community, knowing that that's our representation every single day, not just when there's a crisis or a hurricane or some other such event. So I thank everyone for their service, certainly for your leadership in ensuring that we, you know, could, could be in school on Monday morning and serve our families where we needed them most and serve our communities next to us as well. We're still doing that and will continue to do that. But first responders, BTS, utility workers, we recognize greatly the work that, that has happened this weekend and is continuing to happen, and certainly what we're now doing to support our neighbors. So thank you very much for that. Definitely heroes in, in my mind. Also related to that, but unrelated to the most recent events are, we had a, a water main break in the Holston View area about a week ago, prior to even all of this hurricane mess. And the city of Bristol stepped up in big ways to support us without hesitation. Terry Napier and his team brought restrooms to Holston View so we didn't have to send those kids home. We could keep them at school where they were in the middle of lunch and we were serving them food. They finished out the day because we had restrooms and, and could feed them and get them through the day. Mark Quickle and the Utility Department worked diligently well into the night to restore water services to that area so we could come to school the very next day. So again, as I said, everyday heroes, those things happen every day in our community, and I'm grateful for that. And I know they don't do it for us to keep our kids in school, but I appreciate that they care so much about our community that we can be in school and we can keep our kids safe. Couple of announcements, October is National Principals Month, so I'd just like to recognize our principals, John Sproles at Anderson, Denise McKee at Avoca, Trey Arrington at Fairmount, Tanica Harden at Haynesfield, Jane Leo at Holston View, Luke Douthat at Tennessee Middle School, Kim Kirk at Tennessee High School, and Keith Parker at Tennessee Online Public School. Those folks dedicate their lives to children and I appreciate them and they get a month that we get to celebrate them. That's about all they get. Tennessee Promise Mentors are needed, that happens every year in the state of Tennessee. If you're interested in giving, really, it's minimal time and effort to support a senior in high school. You can partner with a Tennessee High School senior or a Tennessee Online Public School senior. It's really just helping them navigate the college process, how to, how to fill out applications, fill out a FAFSA, and just serving as an adult mentor to help them navigate some things that they might not be familiar with, just another positive adult in their lives. And then finally, our 72nd, I think, annual Music in the Castle is this Saturday, October 5th, in the Stone Castle, so you're all invited to that. Anyone have any questions for me? Thank you.
Have you, wait a minute. Have you talked to us about your golden doodle?
No, I have not. Actually, I just, I get confused for when I've heard this. I just got, I was sitting here during all these wonderful recognitions and received a text message. We just picked up our service dog, so excited, and got it back to Bristol from South Carolina. Took a few days to, to get to her. Her name is Jingle. We, we actually picked her up, Kay Ward picked her up, and we, the, the dog will be trained by an organization, thankfully, right in Abingdon. We just coincidentally found a top-notch agency that can train her here and will also train a handler and a backup handler. So our staff, this, this Jingle will actually be placed at Viking Academy, service dog, really emotional support therapy dog. This dog will be at Viking Academy. Staff at Viking Academy are encouraged to apply to be the handler or the backup handler if they choose, so we haven't selected that person or those persons yet. Once we do, they'll be trained alongside Jingle and hopefully she will be ready for use in January. We also have plans for a second dog that will be owned by a staff member and will, so a little bit of a different model there, but that dog will be at Tennessee High School, hopefully on the same timeline. But yes, we got Jingle and she's in Bristol today. Very excited about her. I'm happy to share videos and all that will keep you posted on her. You're gonna love her and want to meet her, I'm sure. Thank you, Margaret. Forgot about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the appearance of citizens, and no one had signed up. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to address council this evening? All right, seen none. Next, we have one ordinance on first reading, Ordinance 24-15, ordinance to abandon, abandon a portion of the Partnership Park Road as public right-of-way. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Turner. Good evening, council members. Tonight, we have a first reading of an ordinance to abandon a portion of the Partnership Park right-of-way. This request was filed by Mr. Clay Walker, CEO of Networks. The Planning Commission did review this at their September meeting and voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to City Council on their request. They did add a contingency in their recommendation that if any utilities be identified after their review, that an easement be added to cover that particular utility in the recommendation that you hear tonight. So after the Planning Commission meeting, there was a sewer line discovered, and so the city, the resolution reads that the city would retain a 20-foot easement on the sewer line that exists on Partnership Park Road. I do have a slide, just one quick slide, and this is your Exhibit A in the resolution that outlines or patches in the area that would be proposed for abandonment. So it's just a little bit of a strange shape here that will round out the, the parcel here below. It's about 43,000 square feet of right-of-way. And then just one additional slide, I know this is a little bit hard to see, but it shows the sewer line that cuts across the existing cul-de-sac, and that is the sewer line that would retain the 20-foot easement 10 feet on either side. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a motion, Ordinance 24-15?
Motion to approve Ordinance 24-15 to abandon a portion of Partnership Park Road as public right-of-way.
Second?
A motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this matter? Seen none? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mary Lee?
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Ordinance 24-13, mending Chapter 6 of the alcoholic beverages requirements on temporary permits. Ms. Smith is going to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is on second reading. The purpose of this ordinance, as you have said, is to make changes to the process for obtaining a temporary beer permit. Currently, temporary beer permits expire in a year from when they're issued, and that means that the temporary beer permit holders have to come in and apply and go through their, their process. And sometimes that can make it difficult to actually have their permit in time for public events. And so the Beer Board recommended that all of the permits expire at the same time, right before the first regularly scheduled meeting in January, and then those permit holders would be able to come in and get their permits for the entire year in order to hold those events. The temporary permits would still only be for 30 days within a calendar year, so those days can be scheduled as the permit holder wants, to allow for them to really, you know, choose the events that they want to have their, their permit active for. They just have to notify the Beer Board Secretary of the dates that they're going to be using the temporary beer permit so that the beer, the police can be aware of it for enforcement purposes. We've also made a few other changes that are less major, but one of them is removing the requirement that beer notices be advertised in the paper. Currently, the ordinance says that it has to be advertised in the newspaper. State law does not require that. Because of the expense and delay involved, it was felt like that might be a better, a better way to advertise might be to put it on the city's website. And it could still be advertised in the newspaper if it was necessary, but it wouldn't be required to be. We've clarified some definitions to make clear that businesses that have a purpose, a primary purpose, other than just selling beer and food could still accommodate, still acquire a beer permit. So that would apply to places like billiard halls, golf courses, those kinds of things, which most of them have, have applied for permits already, and so we're cleaning up and making sure that that's still working out for them. And then just cleaning up some language in Section 16-144 about Tennessee law that requires the Beer Board to grant a permit to a business that has- that requires the Beer Board to grant a permit to a business that has an ABC permit. That language is not super clear in the ordinance as it stands. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Do I have a motion on 24-13?
I make a motion to approve the proposed revision of City Beer Ordinance, ordinance 24-13, as written.
Second, ma'am.
A motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on this matter? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And I'll just say that I know that this will make the Beer Board happy. I know that this was brought up sometime, I guess last year, during one of our races, and I think a change in this date to where everyone is getting their permits at the same time is, it's a good thing. So a motion and a second. There's no other discussion? Mary Lee?
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
All right, next is our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda is the minutes of September 3rd, City Council meeting, approval of the minutes of September 10th, City Council called meeting, the minutes of the September 24th, City Council Work Session, approval of Resolution 24-138, authorizing the purchase of a global positioning system equipment, approval of Resolution 24-139, authorizing the purchase of software support for our GIS system, approval of Resolution 24-140, amending the Tennessee Department of Transportation Alternatives Grant Agreement for the Bluff City Highway Pedestrian Project, approval of Resolution 24-141, authorizing the purchase of uniforms for both the police and fire departments through SORTSWA. We have approval of Resolution 24-142, authorizing the city to seek competitive sealed proposals for the fire department station alerting system. Approval of Resolution 24-143, authorizing the city to seek competitive sealed proposals for the fire department reporting software. Approval of Resolution 24-144, authorizing the renewal of the Microsoft Office 365. Approval of Resolution 24-145, authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck under the state contract for our water plant. And we have approval of Resolution 24-146, authorizing the purchase of network equipment through the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Association. Approval of Resolution 24-147, authorizing purchase of network equipment through TIPS USA, another cooperative purchasing association. And finally, approval of Resolution 24-148, awarding a bid for the purchase of sodium, I'm gonna, hypochlorite bleach. And that is all.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on the consent agenda? Would any member of council like any item removed? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mary Lee?
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Next, we have our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First, a huge thank you to our staff, as has been discussed tonight. The devastation around us is really the first I've ever experienced, and I'm sure most people in the room, but all of our departments have just stepped up and helped out, both within our city, but also with our neighbors who are in such dire need. Our police and fire, our utility staff, our street staff, our solid waste crew, our transit staff, our community engagement and event staff, our general services staff, our park and rec staff, of course, BTS. Everybody, it's been just inspiring to see how everyone pulled together and just instantly worked together. There was no question, and everybody just, I mean, we had chiefs standing out in the rain directing traffic, and people just did what had to be done. We're still helping out our neighbors, and we'll continue to do so as long as the need is there, and we can still provide service to our residents. We did a collection event. Thank you to Taylor and Mike Neens with Park and Rec, Saturday, Sunday, and yesterday, and we're able to bring truckloads to Elizabethan to be distributed, both within that city and to areas that couldn't be reached otherwise by helicopter. Absolutely, our community just stepped up. The heart that this community has is, again, awe-inspiring. Heart goes out to everyone, and we will continue to do whatever we can to help support wherever that need is. Just some nuts and bolts things. We had received some complaints about the intersection of Georgia Avenue and East Cedar Street, and I just wanted to give a report back on that. We have ordered LED lighted stop signs to install. There is about a two-month delay in receiving those, but they will be installed as soon as they are received. And also, there's an issue where people kind of swing out into the other lane to make a turn. And so we are going to put some traffic calming domes in those center lanes to try and keep people from doing that. And if those don't work, we'll keep evaluating, but that is what we're working on right now. So we have heard the complaints and are trying to address those. As was, put on our website and put out on social media, our brush collection, you do not need to call or fill out a form for brush collection. We will be doing just entire citywide sweeps. There's so much because of the storm. So that is put on hold. However, if people have bulk to be collected, that goes separately in a different truck to a different location. We do still ask people to either call in or fill out a form for that, and just please be patient with us. The amount of material to be picked up is, as I'm sure you've seen, incredible, and our staff are working as diligently as they can and prioritizing the best that they can, but it may be a little bit. But again, they will get there, just be patient with us, please. And then just the events. I know the chief talked about the fire open house on Saturday, and Dr. Tudor talked about Music in the Castle. There's many, many other things going on. October is a busy month. We've got our state street farmers market still going in October on Saturdays, so head down there. Pepperfest downtown on October 5th, from 2:00 to 7:00. We've got Tri-Pride on October 12th, the parade from 11:00 to noon. We have Transit Day at the Downtown Center, so everyone is welcome to come to that. That's from 11:00 to 1:00 on October 16th. We've got the big, big Halloween events on October 26th. That's the last of our farmers markets for the season. We've got Pumpkin Palooza from 9:00 to 11:00, downtown trick-or-treating from 5:00 to 7:00. We will be closing State Street for that this year. And then the Halloween Parade from 7:00 to 8:00. So many, many activities going on to take advantage of before the weather gets a little colder. That's all I have.
All right, next we've got city council comments. I'll, actually, I'll start this time, but I normally do not. But I will say that, just following up with what you said of the last three days, I know of collecting donations and taking to Elizabethan, of seeing the outpour from our community Watching people, young kids, bringing bags of whatever to us is, the outpour of generosity is appreciated. And all of our staff who has helped delivering, thank you. And I was in a meeting today. Tima, I guess we'll be setting up at the Speedway, should be tomorrow, Tom. And they are going to have drop-off areas there. They'll have people of sorting and of getting everything to the affected communities, whether it be by helicopter or whatever is needed. But that is going to be a drop-off spot. Should be up and running tomorrow. So if there's anyone watching or anyone here, that is gonna be a spot that, here locally, and we'll make sure that it gets to the proper places. So, but once again, all our staff. I know Friday, I was signing something for the chief, and it was probably 2:00 in the afternoon. And I think the guys came in, they were on their eighth call of the day, that day. So thank you to all of our staff, everyone. Appreciate it, so.
Let's look in and follow up with that. This has been such an extraordinary situation, one that we haven't seen quite like this before that I can remember. I know the snowstorm of '93 was pretty big, but this has been so impacting, and it's going to continue to be impacting. And I think that we need to realize that when we all get back into the rhythm of our day-to-day lives, there are people whose lives, as they knew them, have completely ended. We have a family member in Asheville that had three different trees fall through their home. A young couple, they have to get the trees off first, then they have to tarp it before an insurance adjuster will even come to look at it. They're currently living in a teardrop camper on their property for a variety of reasons. They are in the Asheville proper area. Their parents got to them today after three hours and going to Greenville to try to come up. They, one of the biggest concerns or needs that they have is actually fuel and gasoline, to keep generators going, to keep chainsaws going. It's devastating. And so as we go back into our day-to-day lives, I hope that we will remember that there are some that it's gonna take months, if not at least a year, to pull their life back together, and it will never be what it once was. So when situations like this happen, there's such a tremendous outpouring. And I just want us to remember that that outpouring will need to continue for some time. To the school system, I would say a big thank you. I think that it was prudent to not be in school on Friday, but I was so glad that you opened on Monday because we have a lot of children in our school system that their meals come through the school system. And they, being out of school unexpectedly on Friday, some of our children didn't have proper meals for three days, and going back to school and having that breakfast on Monday morning was critical for a lot of our children. And so we do have a lot of needs in our community, in our own community, but those needs have been dwarfed to some degree. But we still need to remember those needs in our community. To our crews, we can never thank you enough, fire, police, our road crews that were up to their necks prior to the hurricane. Our bad weather isn't completely behind us. They're predicting two or three more storms that's supposed to follow the same path. We'll see whether or not they materialize. So we still need to be vigilant about our neighbors in our own community and about our neighbors in the surrounding region. This has just been very hard-hitting for many in a way that we can't really even understand. So to the mayor's point, I really appreciate everything that the community has done. I appreciate our crews as well as BTSs. I know that they're up against a wall because people are incredibly anxious to have their power restored, and it's down to just a few hundred now, right?
I think about five something is where we are right now.
And that's in the total service area in the county, as well as down towards Kingsport and other areas, so.
I would say that probably the reason Ms. Fleener was not here, her husband works for BTS, and so I know the hours that he has been putting in, I'd say that that's why she was not able to come this evening, so.
That's right. And it's an unusual situation, and we may or may not have all had all of the equipment that we needed, but we were fortunate that we had people coming in from other areas. I think, what, Huntsville, Alabama came in?
Jackson, Tennessee.
Jackson, Tennessee. So we've had others that have come in to help us out. Thank you.
So I think we're all saying the same types of things, but it is overwhelming. I feel like the best way to describe it is that it looks like war zones, and forever so many small communities are gone completely. So, and personally, my sister and her family, including a cat and a three-year-old, came into our house this evening, so we don't know how long we'll have them. I'm hopeful for Asheville area, the center, that power will be on, but the water, I think, is gonna be a much bigger issue than the power. But it is just beyond imagination, beyond belief, beyond nightmares. And there will, there are ripple effects. We don't even know what those are yet, but supply chains, how much we're gonna be affected as neighbors. And I am very grateful for the folks here, and also grateful that I know some people here had devastating things happen to their homes, but in comparison, we just are very, very fortunate. And I think I like to do the Mr. Rogers things, that when bad things happen, look to the helpers. And that's certainly who we are thanking so much. And that includes the individuals who are bringing things to be donated, et cetera. And then the last, it was also that, give grace to everybody, to city for pickup, et cetera, that you don't know what the backstories are with different people in different situations. So, and that grace may need to extend a whole lot longer than we think it might need to extend. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
I'd just like to add one small thing, but all the thank yous, there's not enough thank yous to go out for everything that everyone's been doing. One little takeaway from when we were doing the donations or pick up the donations, talked to a few parents that had their kids with them. And there was one little boy, he was kind of struggling to carry what he had, and I asked him, "May I help him?" And his mom said, "No, we're trying to teach him what it's all about, to help and give to others." And I thought that was just, you know, just very, very emotional. I got kind of emotional just listening to that. And, but, you know, that just goes to show that, you know, our youth, you know, there's so much to be proud of, and they're gonna do so much great in this world.
I'll just echo what everybody else has said, and the great thing, this is a horrible circumstance, but there's a stream of hope through all of it, because so many people have stood up and started to help and help others without even a hesitation. And that says a whole lot about the type of people that live in this region. It says a whole lot about the character that's here and the strength that's here, which, as hard as it will be, I think this is a region that can handle it. This is a community that can stand the test to do what needs to be done. So as bleak as it is, there is a very bright spot and a very hopeful spot. So I'm grateful, again, for the people of our city who have, that work for our city that have stood up for BTEs, but also just others from all of the community that's, that are really reaching out and to help the people from western North Carolina and southwest Virginia, I mean, all over. That is a very bright spot in a very dark place, and we need that. So I'm grateful that tonight we got to recognize a lot of people that have already been doing that for years and years, but even now have continued to do that. So holding on to hope in the midst of dark times and the light in the dark times is very important. So I appreciate that from all of you all as well.
Mr. Mayor, may I say one other thing? I'd really like to thank Mr. Booger for coming tonight. When we are all together again, our nation will have voted. I would encourage everyone to vote. Our country is in a very unique situation right now, and I find it very concerning. And if we are to continue to have the privilege of voting, it's important that we all go to vote. And thank you, Mr. Booger.
Yes, thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.